Um, in more than that, sort of, in more whole business.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me.
New business. Yeah, good. Go ahead. Guys, take your names.
Esha Williams.
Okay.
Ellen Wong, Liberty Ellington Road. And this may not be the time to bring this up, but I noticed that Roush on Dayton Farmingville has started to cut in his, his little project.
I've seen that, yes.
And I know that we won in one instance, and then at the Supreme Court, we lost.
That's correct.
So, um, this is my question. Is there any way, and I'm not talking about going back to court, but is there any way that through the court, through perhaps publicity, maybe social media, the court of public opinion, that we can do something to get people's attention about what has happened and what has been allowed? Um, I don't serve on zoning committee quite, quite a few years back, but I do know there are other options that we, you know, that, that we can play with, whether it be, um, whether it be, uh, maybe signatures, uh, and sent to with a letter to the Supreme Court about what they have done, maybe going to the news and talking to them about what we have done, what they have done, the, the property value of all these homes out here that are getting ready to crash.
Right.
Because of what he is putting in. So maybe if we attack this from another angle instead of just legally, is there a way that we can do that? Uh, I would be willing to do the research. I would be willing to head that. I would be willing to do whatever is necessary 'cause it is right down the street from me, within half of a mile.
Thanks.
So, uh...
Oh, okay. Okay.
Um, I'm not so sure on that aspect. Don't you go forward. I'm not trying to say anything negative or what you're saying, but, um, I think going forward, I want to investigate who's watching.
We've been all watching. We've been, we've been forming committees. We all went around there. We all went gone.
We, so, so that takes some EPA licenses to proceed with that venture.
To watch him?
That isn't, yeah. That composting pile takes some EPA licenses. And he has that, like, he got, he got permitted, he got granted that license when, um, you know, careful I say that. Uh, there's been issues before. That's all I'm saying.
With all of his facilities, we're, we're there.
Exactly, exactly.
We're there.
So, um, is to protect Mother Earth, what kind of liner do you, you know, where, where is instruction drawings?
So I will, I do believe that, um, he got away with a rubber liner. I think that's what he got away with.
And it has to be sealed.
And I, I, I am not sure about that.
Makes a big difference.
So, I guess where I'm coming from is, is he, he's been given permission.
Yes.
And he can proceed.
Yes.
I'm saying, instead of just going back to court 'cause I don't think that's an option, I think court's not an option. What else can we do? And, and I would be willing to research that. I'd be willing to speak with you privately, meet with you guys, whatever we need to do.
It's pretty bad. I, I was passive, um, just the other day in...
Sorry, George.
Yeah, um, right now, we don't have somebody that's in the zoning department, but I know they had, uh, like you said, the zoning committee at one point in time. And I'm not sure. Are you aware, is there anybody that's still active on that committee that you might be able to...
No, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So we're not sure we have anybody on the zoning...
Yeah, it's like the resolutions.
Okay. Right.
I don't think we have enough.
Okay, yeah, we can get another committee. It's not that. It's just that right now, we did, the zoning, the zoning, um, director would be the person that will head that up. So right now, we're looking for zoning, um, um, staff to come in and, um, see if we can get somebody for that position and code enforcement.
Okay, um, so I, I recognize you're looking for someone to do that, but since it's our community, there's still things we can do.
Right.
You know, there, I mean, as being part of Jefferson Township, we can do things. So I just, I don't, I wouldn't want to work on my own, and I would like to ask for assistance and also to get the work out if necessary. My second part of this question is, what are we doing to make sure that this doesn't happen somewhere else in our township?
Very good question.
And I believe that is taking, I believe, I had, I look on records. I believe that after it was started, the zoning rules have been changed so it cannot be done again.
Are we talking about no dumps? No, nothing?
Correct. We, let, let me, I, I know Jim knows that, knows the details, but he was involved in that. It was still, that was before my four years. That was started, that was changed before my beginning.
Okay.
And he isn't, Mr. McGuire is over at the zoning...
Yes, and he was, he was an active trustee at that point in time. And, uh, he was involved in that. So you probably know that more sure, but I am pretty sure that, okay, they got by with that this time, and we changed the rules and regulations, and we could be happy with it. That can be done again.
Okay. 'Cause we have so much land out here. Um, that's my concern. Where else are they gonna, you know, if somebody with the, with the, the way that the times are, what if someone else can't hold on to the property? And next thing you know, you've got another fifty, hundred acres, and now it's being used for whatever...
'Cause I know the thing to change is, is what we did stopped us from getting bigger than ten. So we start, that's a ten acre spot on a eighty acre farm. I don't know what you still, that, I mean, what's that farm is. Now, if you go to the east side of the driveway, that gets a lot of rain wash. That is a lot of surface water, erosion problems. And I was happy when I heard, I mean, after I already got accepted and everything, got put in, at least it's on the higher part of the property and not, that gets much, much surface water and run through it. But I'm curious, and, and what is your part to do as far as the liner, the controlling contamination getting in the ground? What, how we, that's...
And, and ruining our water chambers because a lot of us out there are still on wells.
Wells, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, and, so I, I, I don't want to bring up anything crazy, but is Mr. McGuire still, um, a trustee?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So he just wasn't here, so I just, I'm asking.
Yes.
I understand. And if you'd like, I can give you his information so you can contact him.
Okay, and I would like to contact him. And as well, if you don't mind, I would, I would like to have a meeting with both of you so we could do something with this, or I can, I can start something with this. This is very important to me.
Yes.
Um, you know, we've been here for over, over forty years, you know, and my family is, if, if they continue, they will stay in the township in that area. And I, I have a problem with that. I really am upset.
You got ten?
So, I'm sorry.
Ten?
I have a pen.
Ten, ten?
Thank you.
I'll tell you what. Can I, can I say something?
Absolutely.
You're gonna give your name. I'll give you your name.
I'm Floyd Yanks. And this is my building, all right?
Thank you.
We live side by side, all right? Now... I don't know how to put this. I'm trying to put this gently as I can. Oh, two seven seven zero Liberty Ellington. Right, four, nine, ten, five.
Okay.
All right? So, did you wash that driveway?
Very well. Do you move, wash that driveway? Is your driveway washed out?
That's on the other side of it.
That's on the other side, yes. And how can I say this nicely? The, the person that we are talking about doesn't play by the rules. Let's face it. Okay? At three o'clock in the morning, you can hear dump trucks going down through there. Okay? Now, this is not the reason. Usually when it's warm, I have a window on it. I can hear dump trucks going into this facility. Okay? And I can hear, and I can hear them coming back out. Now, this is back two thirty, three o'clock in the morning. So, I mean, well, I'll leave it there. I'll leave it there.
Nine, nine three seven.
Nine three seven.
Seven seven six.
Seven seven six.
Oh nine eight nine.
Oh nine eight nine.
Michael Lawford, that's the personal cell. Any of you people who call at any time you want, I do log things. You might not answer it. I have a busy man, and I will call you back.
Okay. I'll be giving you a call 'cause I'm gonna request from both of you to discuss this, to see what we can do. And...
Trustee Ben.
She just said something to me that she wanted to do, but I don't know.
Oh, um, as far as maybe, uh, working on the zoning, uh, committee, we just have to get somebody in zoning to be over that, oversee that. We first have to see who, if anybody is still in there, working on that committee.
Okay. And one more question. What are the township hours? I never kind of know what's happening with the hours.
Okay, so first of all, there's nobody here in the township, but three trustees and a co-officer in this building.
Okay.
So we, I work from home, and they, he, he...
That's why I work.
Right now, we don't have an administrator or an assistant.
Nobody here.
They will be here.
Oh, it's supposed to be ten, nine to twelve.
So right now, offices are only open by contact. So I'm...
Yes.
Thank you.
And there, it's a phone out there that if you pick it up and call, it'll go to our, um, our phones. And then if we don't answer the phone, it goes to our email.
Okay. And after this is over, if I can get his information too, that would be great.
Just me?
Thank you.
Okay, uh... Anybody else have any comments? Okay, uh...
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate you hearing us.
Any other new business?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, give your name. I'll give you your name first.
Do y'all find people for dumping?
I'm sorry?
Do you find people for dumping?
Yes, there's an, yes, the Sheriff's Department has an environmental division. They, they, I don't know about finding them, but there's...
You know where I'm going. The house next door to me, they're dumping over there again.
That's exactly my reason, one of the reasons why I want to have this special meeting because that's an ongoing issue, and they continue to do whatever they want. And, and we have to come together and work together to address that issue because it's not just a share issue.
Right.
It's not just code enforcement or zoning. We all have to come together to work toward that issue.
I just want to hand out with the same thing I had last year.
I understand, yes.
And we, we want to work as a group, change the attitude. Move to Jefferson Township 'cause you can do whatever you want. We want that to change.
Yes.
Two two five, two two five help.
We want it to change.
Yes.
Two two five help is the number you call to report illegal dumping. That is the dispatch center, and they will, uh, that deputy will be assigned to that call.
Write that number down. Call that, it works. Marion?
Okay.
I'll give you your name. I'll say it.
You don't, you don't actually see them doing it unless you know they're the ones that's doing it. I mean, you know who's putting the garbage and the televisions and the beds and all that stuff on somebody else's property.
Yep.
So if I call you, I can't say, well, I saw, uh...
No, but it allows us to initiate, you know, for the month of February, I'm getting ready to read here, we have one call reference illegal dumping for the whole month.
We called before, but...
But...
We called when the rats were running all over everywhere, so...
But the, you know, to get the call initiates a dispatch for a deputy.
Okay.
You know, if, if you're talking about the, the property on Altrum, part of the problem there is there's nobody that owns that, that is alive, that can act as a state party to that in a criminal complaint. And that's been the ongoing issue with that property. It never got probated. It never went into the hands of anybody that can be a legal complaint. So...
Well, we've called before. We called all last year, you know, as far as that's concerned.
Things will, things will change. Learn my word. Things will change.
So that's the reason I had to call because it wasn't done last year, except for the people that came and helped us.
Marion, your next.
Um, Marion C. Paris, fifty one forty Altrum Road, Dayton, Ohio, four five four one seven. Um, the major problem is when most, when you have people that finally, I'm gonna say this, and people are gonna hate me. I grew up in Jefferson. Jefferson is all I know. But now we have people moving in out here that don't understand things. So what I mean by they don't understand things like, uh, dumping, the illegal juke joint or whatever you wanna call it, uh, trash they throw out and don't call the people to come get it. That, um, I stay, um, I don't have a car, so I have to catch the bus. So every time I catch a bus or stand somewhere, I see trash everywhere. And the major problem is the problem that lives down my street. They're friends. They come in between one of my neighbor's yards, and they dump their stuff. We have a new lady on the street. They dump their bottles. And they have trash and all this, and she's afraid to come out. She doesn't have a fence. They're dropping their alcohol bottles. They're breaking glass. They're doing a lot of things. Now, I believe what the problem is, if you're a Jefferson Township person, you have a little bit more respect for your place. These people are coming from Dayton. They have no respect for anything, for anybody. And this is the problem I have or live on or live around because of, uh, I had to call on the night of the Oscars because a set person, the house we complained about a lot, she had her cane horse. So this is a big, tall brown dog, brindle color. He barked all night, all night. And the reason being is, time to find out. I called the sheriff, and I'm not ashamed. I, I don't give my name, but I call him for a reason. Now, when you can't sleep and you have to hear a dog all the way up the hill going... I mean, you know, everybody would like peace. Most of the people on my street are older.
Excuse me, Marion. Let me ask you, let me just ask. Doesn't Jefferson have, uh, something about against dogs barking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Persistent. It has to be persistent for a period of time. So if, if we go there, we witness it, and it's ongoing, yes, it can be a citation.
Okay.
And so, so I did... When you hear that... Yeah, I did. I did. But that's what the problem is. Maybe with everything, you have to deal with what's going on.
Okay.
Do you know if it was rectified?
Yes.
You guess it, it was or wasn't?
It was rectified 'cause I called the sheriff the day after, and they said, um, she, she told him a little story. She said, "I have four male dogs and one female, and the female is in heat." So that means this summer, we will be listening to them.
And then, who's that? You still want to speak?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Michelle Cooper, seventy six twenty four McLean Drive. So, is it rectified?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think you said that there's no living person that owns that property, so does that not mean that it belongs to the township?
And... No, it's still accruing taxes and under the name of the deceased owner. It has not been, nothing, it, it's, it's as if it just runs in time. It's not the award of the township or the, the county, or it's still, if you look it up under tax records...
So then, how do we break it?
By my pay scale, I'm not sure, not sure what to do. If, if, that's somebody else's...
So I think I should be sitting there and just, it wasn't passed off to anybody, so it's just sitting there?
So what used to happen was, that kind of property, it, it could go through the laymate. That could be one of the potential properties that would go through the laymate. 'Cause what's happening is, it's caught up because the owner has deceased. And there is a relative, but I don't think she wants to step up. Um, and so the owner's deceased. There's money that's owed on the house to the bank. The bank doesn't want to give it up. They pretty much rather cave in before.
Well, then we should be able to make the bank responsible for it.
That's right. Bank should be responsible.
So Justin, that was one of the houses that Justin was working on. Again, we don't know. We, we have to find out where he left off at in the process. So...
I would think we'd be able to hold the bank responsible. If the bank doesn't want to let it go, then they should be responsible for the cleanup and for the upkeep of that house.
We, we've made numerous calls downtown regarding the tax situation.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, there was a little bit of conversation about if it was in a good sellable type position where they might be able to recruit some money, that we might be able to move forward there, but they never, it never went anywhere. We, we pitched it as a, as a nuisance that we'd like to get, uh, you know, on the foreclosure or the sheriff's sale or, you know, anything we can to get it into another hand to, uh, you know, have some control, take some control over it and, uh, you know, be a decision maker for it. But it, it, it just, it never went anywhere.
Kenny?
Uh, Kenny Smith, fifty sixty seven Altrum Road. Uh, couldn't a property be boarded up and flagged by the sheriff's office that no trespassing? And after, at that point, if they go back over it in there, they are really violating the law. And at that point, they can be taken downtown or some...
If, if we had just somebody that could exert some kind of legal control over it, sign a piece of paper that said, "Nobody on the property."
Okay, okay.
We could, we could do that all day long, but the problem has been getting that person, getting their, uh, to, to, to somebody that has the authority to issue trespasses for that.
Can it be boarded up, Doug? Because they have all kinds of stuff that's, that's been dumped in the house as well.
Yeah, they do that.
There's a bunch of stuff that's in the house.
We, we might be able to look at it from like a, you know, we'd have to evaluate it from a safety perspective, yeah, and see if something could be worked out there.
Okay.
Yep.
So you have Lawson, eight oh one Calumet Lane.
I have two questions, one for him. I know that I made an offer on a property, a tax lien, and it's kind of in the same boat where it has to, but it takes a long time. But during this time, they, like, I paid two thousand dollars down on a property that owes a lot of taxes. They do all the research downtown, and, um, if nobody is willing to go for this property or fight for their rights to it as an heir, then this property will go up to an auction, and then I have the right to bid on it also. So can we, can they, can someone do that for that property?
My understanding is there is a process there. I'm not, you know, in any way...
It's a long time.
Any way, shape, or form, an expert on that, but it requires somebody to come forward with that substantial down payment to initiate it.
I think it's two thousand dollars, and you get it all back. So maybe in the thousands...
On that property?
Yeah, it, that's been done already on that.
It has? Somebody has already done a tax lien?
I ask you one quick question. What bank has it?
It'll be on the tax record.
Yeah, we'll have to look it up.
I know that this, this, this house is an ongoing issue.
Yep.
Um, trust me, we are real, we just got started. Please give us a chance to try to get these things addressed. Um, because it went for a long time, and, and I think some of you all know, Trustee McLawford, and I, even Tracy's out there, uh, on your behalf, you know, trying to...
I'm pretty good on the numbers.
Yeah, uh, uh, but it takes more work. And so, so we hear you. Um, I, I, we need to move on. Um, but we hear you, and we're, we're working to do our best.
And, and I do appreciate that. I mean, people showing up and talking to us. We, as trustees, can only do our job if we know what you want, you know, and come and talk to us. So I want the meetings to be well-rounded like this. I know about yelling matches in the world. I want us to communicate with the residents and get things done. So let's move on. Uh, I think resolutions are next.
I, I have one comment. I don't know. I figured it's gonna go, but it was about the, the license, the legal license. Um, is there anything you want to do with that?
Um, is there anything you want to do with that, or are we just gonna leave it, leave it there? You know, I sent that out, I think you submitted it to the sheriff.
I, I, I saw his, I saw his response, I handled it.
Okay, so we're not even worried about it.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Alright, that's it, I just put in my rest.
Okay, so, uh, the first resolution will be, uh, twenty two dash oh two
Six.
Six. Jefferson Township Board Trustees to hereby approve and require transcribed minutes for the year of twenty twenty one. Uh, whereas Jefferson Township trustees have had findings in the state audits, that our meetings have not been produced and approved for public inspection in a timely manner per the Ohio Open Meeting Act. We were, we were required by the previous administration to make a word-by-word uh, record of our minutes, it was never done. And we had all last year, there's fifty-four meetings, and I think they, they told me a little fifty-six hours of vacation, if we were that way done, so we hired a firm to do that, and we have them. And what I want to stress is that, although it was done by computer, and everybody makes mistakes, and if you pull up, um, so something going on in March something, a meeting last year, and you look at the transcriptions of the meeting minutes for that day, and you're looking through there, the legal documentation of that meeting is still going to be that audio recording, there might be a mistake in this, in this transcription. Everybody makes mistakes, any human that does it, or machine does it, mistakes happen. So the audio recording for this resolution, and it stays out in here, whereas there is also an audio recording of these public meetings to serve as an official backup to these approved word-by-word meeting minutes. So that is always going to be the official backup, if it goes to court, if there's any questions of what was written down in the transcriptions, that we've got to get ourselves up to date, we've got to be transparent with the residents of this township, and I don't think anyone interviewed will sit down and be fifty-four hour, be fifty-four hours, and we're just, uh, dialogue. Anyway, we got to do that. Going forward, what we've done from here on out, and what we approved earlier, is a short version of the meetings, that we're doing now, to anybody else does in state. Nobody in the state of Ohio doesn't work on work minutes. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to, um, adopt Resolution twenty two dash oh two six.
A second.
Any questions? Ms. Tracy Edwards, go ahead, roll call, please.
Trustee McGlafon?
Yes.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Motion carries. So next will be, uh, Resolution, uh, twenty two dash oh two seven. Jefferson Township Board Trustees to hereby honor the memory of a long lifetime trustee Bryce Sims. I personally did not know the man, that somebody has written a, uh.
I did.
Thank you very much. You want to, what about this, if you know, you know, body, then.
Uh, it's a resolution, um, to be read at his services. You guys want to hear it?
Yeah.
Resolution honoring memory of Bryce C. Sims, whereas Bryce C. Sims passed away March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, we find it an appropriate occasion for the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees to reflect on his life and service to the community, and whereas Bryce C. Sims was elected and served as Jefferson Township trustee in Montgomery County since nineteen seventy. Bryce served the township as an elected official for over thirty-eight years, serving as the longest-running tr- township trustee. He also served as president of the Jefferson Township Democratic Club, and whereas throughout his tenure in these positions, Bryce contributed his tireless effort and his long-term vision for the township, and provided superior service to the Jefferson Township community, and as a voice in our democratic process. And whereas Bryce C. Sims also brought to this board his astute business judgment, his quick wit, and the benefit of his experience as the owner of B.C. Wolfy and Home Improvement, and his ability as a leader to set ambitious goals and to inspire others to follow. And whereas the Jefferson Township community made great progress under his leadership in developing this community, providing employment opportunity to those in need, and his dedication and hard work has benefited this community for years to come. And whereas throughout his life, Bryce contributed to Jefferson Township through his service on numerous boards and agencies working for the public good, and his desire to be of service to God and his community. And whereas Bryce provided us all with an example of unselfish, thoughtful, and generous service to others, and how to live life thinking of others and working for the benefit. Now, therefore be it resolved that this board celebrates the life and accomplishments of Bryce Sims and expresses his admiration for life well there. Further resolved, let, that this board extends to his family and to his many friends this board's profound gratitude for all that Bryce has given to the Jefferson Township community, and then it's just for the elect.
Yes, yes.
Okay, you need to, we need to, um, follow the resolution.
Yes, so, um, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty two dash oh two seven, which is, is a legal matter, but it was just written.
A second.
Ms. Edmond, do it.
Trustee McGlafon?
Yes.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so the next resolution. Number twenty two dash oh two eight. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approved the hiring of Robert Griffin as a permanent part-time road department employee. Uh, Rob Griffin has served us in the past, um, built a mechanic, um, very devoted employee, um, he left for various reasons, I won't go to that, but, um, we have problems getting things fixed at the house now, and, um, this will be help us, it will save us a lot of money uh, getting things fixed at the house, and, uh, the office states that he will help load nuisance properties, remove ditch lines, he knows how to run trackers, and all that, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty two dash oh two eight.
A second.
Ms. Tracy, go ahead, roll call, please.
Trustee McGlafon?
Yes.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Motion carries.